Good evening. Whoa. And Happy New Year. We got an echo in the council chambers. This is very exciting. Let's call, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
You got an echo. Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B Smith? Absent. Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
This almost sounds like a karaoke bar.
It's time to start dancing. We do have an invocation, so thank you so much for being here, Greg Swearingen from the Royal Gorge Vineyard Church. Can we all please rise?
Lord, we just look forward to this new year and we're so grateful for this city that we get to live in. And we just ask for your favor. We ask for your blessing. We ask for wisdom for the council to make good decisions, to just continue to make this a great city. And so, Lord, we're so thankful. And we just reach out and ask you to remember those that are struggling, that you would strengthen them, that you would help provide for them, that they would have the courage and the strength to move forward to all that you've called them to. So we just ask your rich blessings in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see. Trying to see if we stop an echo. No, it sounds a lot better. We do, it still is a little bit there. Yeah, it's not as bad. Thank you, Elijah. We do have a citizen's request to speak to city council. I'd like to invite Jenny to come up. Jenny, I don't want to mispronounce your name, so if you could pronounce it for us. Yeah, come on up to the microphone.
Thank you for the opportunity to approach you. My name is Jenny Ganchova. I have lived in Canyon City since 1999. And my main job as a therapist is to help people from Canyon City who suffer from various forms of trauma to become taxpayers and not to remain tax consumers, as I deeply care about the economic prosperity of our city. Healing from trauma sometimes involves pain. When we have a wound that is not well healed and it is collecting pus, we must open it and clean it to start the real healing. Did I make you uncomfortable? I hope so. Very little has ever been said publicly in Canyon City about KKK creating a historic legacy of white supremacy that is still alive and well. Unfortunately, no community entity has invested yet in publicly recognizing the damaging effects on the growing population, the young people of that effect. And I foolishly decided in December to address it in the most inappropriate way. I went to social media, the modern day Agora, and I mentioned that maybe from historic perspective, St. Cloud, the infamous former Colorado KKK headquarters, being painted white, may trigger some of our friends and neighbors because of its symbolism. The outcome was astounding. I was educated on the historic role of color white. I was subjected to tongue lashing. A pillar of the community wanted to audit my books. I need to see your fundings, he said. And the saddest part of all, a lot of people said, you better be careful. So this is not about me and it's not at all about St. Cloud. We love the development in our city. What I think I would like to convey, and I made a copy of this for all of you so you can see some of the details, is that we have generations of young people who suffer from a lot of symbolic intolerance, abuse, ridicule. They have KKK donations left at their lockers at the schools. They have people, you know, just treated them not equally because of the color of their skin or their ethnic origin. We have a friend, and he really wanted me to mention his name, Ian Norris, who left town with his family. What a loss for all of us. Loss of friendship, loss of economic opportunity, loss of talent. So I'm approaching you now because this is not my idea. This is the idea of all these kids who want the city to have their backs to do something about this. I have mentioned a few ideas, and I hope you, our city leaders, can come up with even better ideas, and we can start tackling this one. Thank you.
Jenny, thank you for being here today. It's always an important conversation to have. I'm curious, you said there, where, where are your evidences of promoting KKK as for Canyon City? I mean, that's something we never wish to promote.
So, Madam Mayor, you can read in the body of what I passed to you, the testimony of Ian Norris, whose family was here and left because of the way his kids were treated. I'm making a point that we don't have active KKK. We do have the spirit of white supremacy permitting all areas of life, and that creates a culture, especially in the schools, that presents problems to kids who are not Caucasian. And even the response to my mentioning of that potential issue led to just a tremendous division in the responses. So everybody who cheered was either African-American, Hispanic, or family members, grandparents, parents. Everybody who had skepticism at best and aggression at worst was Caucasian. And so I'm not blaming anyone. We are who we are, and we have principles and priorities. What I'm saying is that I feel it's our responsibility to create an atmosphere of cultural responsibility to all people with various ethnic origins. We can invite experts. I work in behavioral health, and currently we have some excellent experts who help community. We are not alone in Colorado, and Canyon City is not alone. But Canyon City has a particularly painful and very well-known in the state of Colorado history with that issue. And so keeping it back in history is not, in my opinion, the best thing to do. One of the reasons I'm appearing here as myself as a citizen is that I know that people are afraid. I mean, I was told time and time again, you better be careful. And for me, it's a little bit too late to be careful. I survived communism. I worked with Brian Monahan, who's a Green Beret, who has this principle of oppression liber, to liberate the oppressed. So for us, it's very, it's very difficult to be careful right now. We want to make sure that we spark some discussion about it, and it's a positive discussion. It's not pointing fingers. It's not, it's not anything that hurts people. But just as any other social issue of, you know, people who publicly have difficulty expressing themselves because of fear of backlash, this is very serious because I have talked to professionals who have brought their kids to me, and I have ran groups over the course of the years with kids who have been ridiculed, abused, labeled, thought of as someone who's not, who's less of. And so that's, that's been a very steady tendency. And even if you look at the ethnic background of our community, we are lagging compared to any other place in Colorado. And so I think, as far as diversity goes. So I think we have to look at it from a point of view of who we want to be in the third decade of 21st century. Do we want to be more welcoming, more supportive, and more nurturing, and create slightly different reputation? I mean, bluntly put, if you go to northern Colorado and you mention Canyon City, you will have quite a few people who will say, oh, Canyon City. And it's not just history, is my point. Did I answer a question?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Councilmember Tracy?
I just want to thank you for being here. I think it's a topic that is not discussed often enough, and many times it's because we don't know how to get into that discussion or what to do about it if we do. And, you know, it's pervasive in a lot of different ways. I can remember when I moved here in the late 70s, you know, that it was very, the lack of diversity was quite evident, and of course still is today. The ethnic and cultural diversity just isn't here. I think it would benefit our community if we were able to grow more in that direction. But I can remember even way back then that, and I don't know what the circumstances are now, but folks who are ethnic minorities, racial minorities, who work in the correction system often don't live here.
Correct.
Because I have always heard that they just, you know, many of them don't feel comfortable here. So I don't know the solution, but I think it's an important topic to raise in a variety of settings, here, the schools, wherever. Again, I don't know the solution, but I think we, as a community, should address it more.
I really appreciate it, Ms. Tracy. I don't think that this, this is bigger than each one of us individually. I think we can only improve it collectively.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also just wanted to provide just a little bit of feedback. It mentions at the, towards the end of your, what you provided to council, the address about, consider opening to the public the archives with the ledgers of KKK members. I'm not entirely sure what documentation the history museum has, but I know that they do have quite a bit on KKK in Canyon City, and it is certainly open to the public to view and to look through and to see. So that might be an interesting starting point if you haven't already been to the, to the library, sorry, whoa, to the museum to talk to Lisa.
Thank you for that. I have studied the issue because this has bothered me for years. And I think we have a little bit of, kind of, the researchers of the topic have a little bit of a love-hate relationship with, because those are our predecessors. And so sometimes we talk about them in a sensational way or in a little bit too approving type of way. And yes, the records are available, but what Denver did, they created an electronic database, and that created this process of healing. It wasn't all rosy. It wasn't without controversy. So we may not be able to start with something like this, but definitely it ended up with this issue in Denver, just bringing a lot of healing and a lot of compassion at the same time to both of the affected and the historic issue of KKK participation. Thank you for that.
All right, well, thank you, Jenny. It sounds like maybe we should talk to Lisa, our historian, see what they have done in the past, and any recommendations moving forward in acknowledging some of the, I know lots of things in our past that we aren't proud of, and how we're moving forward in better ways.
Yeah, I do want to say something in regard to this topic. You know, we recently were recruiting for a key director position, and, you know, this topic came up. There were some conversations with the school district, and, you know, there are issues going on within the school district with some bullying around race. So there, there's certainly some current examples of how this is still prevalent within the community.
Thank you. I'm curious, I know that our superintendent would, would want to be made aware of this, and I know they're super proactive in taking care of it.
He's the one that brought it to our attention.
Okay.
I would imagine, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. For council member announcements, I do need someone, if they're available, to join me on the radio tomorrow. 8:30 in the morning. Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm Councilmember Tracy.
Just a quick reminder about the monthly Cotter Uranium mill site community advisory group meetings. We continue to meet on third Tuesdays of each month. Our meeting time has changed to 4:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM, and they are hybrid meetings. So we meet in person on the PCC campus and also by Zoom. That's all.
All right, and Councilmember Stein?
I would, I would just like to share with council. And I was in a grocery store yesterday. There's a lot of negative feelings about the recently live bag law, and I think people are very confused. They think that it's, that it was our idea. And I think we need to do maybe a little education. And I would suggest perhaps we could put together, maybe spend a little bit of money and put together some bags with our, our city logo on it and maybe some picture, pictures of the bridge or something that, you know, if people wanted to come in and talk about it, or if they just wanted to come in and get a bag, you know, because there was just, there was a lot of heated nasty things going on at checkout because of that. I think maybe we need to do a little bit of community education about it. I mean, maybe I'm way off base, but that's, I felt a lot of angst, and they're taking it out on the poor clerks. So maybe we could do something to kind of...
Soften the blow, the transition.
You know, a little bit of education about what it is, and maybe we could do a little public service thing, and, and I don't know what it would cost to get, you know, some of those, those bags.
Reusable bags.
Yeah, and just have something, I know we have graphics that we can put on it.
Yeah, we can do some public information and cost out, you know, how much some of those reusable bags might be.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, yeah, I was shocked this morning when I went, I was like, oh, crap, I forgot. I am never going to forget to bring my reusable bags again. But it wouldn't take much, even if you were to purchase a really cool Canyon City bag to, you know, I don't know. But some public education for sure. That's, yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you, Councilmember Stein. Any other announcements? Then we'll move on to the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on December 19th and the special city council meeting, which was the energy committee meeting on December 12th. 7B authorizes the mayor to sign an amendment to the Oil Creek Ditch Maintenance Agreement for the Rhodes Avenue Stormwater Project. 7C authorizes the mayor to sign a stormwater easement agreement for Les Schwab Tire at 3103 East US Highway 50. 7D authorizes the mayor to sign a license agreement with Jeep Tour, Colorado Jeep Tours, passing through Royal Gorge Park and other city-owned parks. 7E authorizes the city administrator to sign a funding agreement with the Canyon City Golden Age Center. 7F extends bids 1021, 1121, 1221, and 2622 for the year 2023. 7G awards bid 123 aggregate materials to T-Zac Heavy and Equipment for an amount not to exceed $90,000. 7H awards bid 0223 hot mix asphalt to Martin Marietta and Fremont pave and ready mix in an amount not to exceed $70,000. 7I awards bid 0323 ready mix concrete to Fremont paving and ready mix in the amount not to exceed $82,000. 7J awards bid 0423 flow fill to Fremont paving and ready mix in an amount not to exceed $33,000. 7K awards bid 0523 traffic control signs to Lidl of Ohio and roadside suppliers of Pueblo in an amount not to exceed $40,000. 7L awards bid 623 aluminum sulfate to Chemtrade in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Looks like we have an extra zero in there. 7M awards bid 723 chlorine to DPC in an amount not to exceed $54,000. 7N awards bid 823 sodium silo chlorified to Harcross in an amount not to exceed $10,890. 7O awards bid 1623 sodium chloride award to Evoqua in an amount not to exceed $32,000. 7P is receive and file list of bills for the period 1020. And 7Q, receive and file cash dispersments for the period 721 to 13.
Job well done on our annual major bid awards. Yeah, that's a lot. And looks like we already have some questions coming in from council. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had questions on three, D, E, and K.
Let's start with D.
I noticed that we had one of the owners of the Jeep Tours company, and I was wondering if I, if maybe he wanted to say something, and then I also had a question for him.
Absolutely, yeah, come on up, we'll call in.
Thank you. What would you like to know?
I was wondering what your process was for determining whether or not a trip could go out based on road conditions.
It's based on, it's kind of arbitrary. It's very difficult to tell because weather conditions here in Canyon City most likely are different on the Royal Gorge or Fremont Peak, and definitely different in Red Canyon. So depending upon the event that we've had, rain or snow typically are the two things that affect us the most. If it's possible, we'd like to try to run out there and see. With the Red Canyon, just beyond Red Canyon, or I should say, on the west side of Red Canyon is a BLM section of property that we go through called Seep Springs. Lots of times I will contact BLM, as they may have already been out there, and get the lowdown on what the roads are like, because out there, if it rains, it can become very slick, and that, that dirt out there is just very slick. For example, the snow that we had today, it's fine because it's frozen and we can drive on top of it, it's not a problem. For the most part, on the Royal Gorge, what I call the Royal Gorge Loop, which is Temple Canyon, crossing the bridge, A3, Fremont Peak, those conditions, the only place that we really have to put any thought towards it usually, unless it's an extreme event, is Fremont Peak itself. And most of that is very rocky, which typically is pretty good, but if you get a significant amount of snow on it, it can become an issue, so we stay out of there. Rex and I have had conversations about what is muddy. Obviously, probably everybody in this room has a different definition of what is too muddy. I know that the city did some work to the actual entrance road that goes to what I call the Silver Gate that takes you to the top of Fremont Peak. And from my understanding, from my drivers, that's made it much, much easier than it used to be. There were some big ruts there that, just because it was that very clay material that would rut out, and now apparently it's what we would call very drivable and very easy. That road has always, not Fremont Peak, but the road to the gate has always, ever since I was a kid, has been big and ruddy, muddy mess, where as a child or as a kid, maybe I went up there and hot-rutted around, I don't know. But I'm sure that that doesn't happen now with the kids, since I think you guys made it, basically you guys have stopped access there, four-wheel-drive access, I believe, on that road, which I think has kept some of the non-professional drivers out of there and kept that road probably in a lot better condition than it's ever been before. So I don't know if that answers your question. Heavy events, definitely. We know problem places, and we do our best to avoid those if possible.
I guess my, my main concern is just, I mean, some of the access roads are, they do get pretty bad. And the reason why, why I'm thinking about this so much is with our Trails Use Policy Committee, we were talking a lot about trail damage, and kind of if you're going to have commercial activities in, how do you make sure that they aren't damaging the trails? So when I was reading through, through the agreement, I was thinking about how do we, you know, the conversation that you have with Rex, how muddy is too muddy? And what would lead to kind of more damage to the roads versus less damage to the road? So I was just interested in your take on it and kind of how you guys make that, that sort of assessment, because obviously you want the roads to be in good shape because it's important for your, your business.
Correct. And, you know, like in, well, you guys have redone the, the road going through Red Canyon, which is beautiful. I mean, it's done very nicely. Once we leave Red Canyon, go into Seep Springs, if there's a lot of, you know, been a lot of moisture, it's a mess, so we stay out of there. But it usually only takes a day of good sunlight to dry that out. It dries very quickly, sometimes two. The road going up, that I think we're probably most talking about is the road going up to the Silver Gate, dries out really quickly, especially now. And really, those are the two, I mean, those are the two places that we see the most, or that we have the most concern about. Temple Canyon in general, I mean, obviously, if we have, you know, a huge massive rainstorm and it washes out the road, we don't know until we get there, and then we just deal with it. But that is, that's happened maybe once in the whole time that I've had car to Jeep Tours.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
I'm at that Silver Gate. So you're saying that we've stopped public access at that road? So do you have exclusive access or a special key?
Yes. Well, I shouldn't say exclusive. I mean, there is a tower at the top of Fremont Peak, so anybody who is doing maintenance on the tower or whatever, they obviously have access. Obviously, the city has access for whatever they may need up there. There's also a ham radio tower up there that I believe, and I'm, don't quote me on this, but I believe the city may lease that to someone, or the Royal Gorge Bridgerton Park might lease that to someone. I'm assuming that they would have access as well. So we're not the only ones, but yes.
Restricted access to those who have leases on the tower.
And I guess, just bringing up road conditions and access and stuff, since that's the topic that we're kind of talking about right now, one of the things I would ask is in the contract that we have, I believe it's number 14, it talks about the roads and the fact that we do have keys to certain areas. One of those areas, even though it's not identified, is Skyline Drive. And Skyline Drive is definitely probably one of the highlights of our tour, is there is dinosaur tracks up there and great rock formations, and of course, great views. Lots of times, Skyline Drive is not open, even when we feel that the weather conditions are favorable. We understand if there's been a bunch of snow, that they're not favorable, and quite honestly, I don't want my Jeeps up there when it's like that anyway. But it kind of addresses this a little bit in the contract, and I just want to verify it, to make sure that I'm not stepping on anybody's toes. But if there are times when the gate is locked, and it's usually because somebody's forgotten to unlock it, and I know the police department, I think, is in charge of that, and they have most likely much better things to be doing than monitoring when Skyline Drive is open and not open. I don't feel that should be on the top of their list of things to do every morning and every afternoon. But there are definitely times when we get there and it's locked, it's a nice sunny day, there's no snow, there's no, you know, no real problem. And in the past, you know, I will call dispatch. Dispatch will talk to somebody who talks to somebody, and they usually have it open for us in the afternoon. I would like to just ask you, although it is somewhat addressed in the contract, we do have keys to it. We would like to kind of have a policy where we don't have to call if we know that it's safe. And keep in mind, it's my insurance. I don't want to send a Jeep up there on a sheet of ice. It's not, it's not in my best interest. But if it's what I consider safe, I'd like to have your blessing to go ahead and open that gate, close, go through, close it behind us, and of course, close it and lock it on the other side when we come out. Today was a very interesting example of this. Yesterday, the Skyline Drive was open, okay? I don't know exactly what the weather conditions were up there. We didn't have any Jeeps out yesterday, but I can imagine it might not have been ideal. Today, it was closed. And today was a perfectly good day to go over Skyline Drive. So there's just times, and again, I'm not, it's not the, I'm sure it's not the number one job of the police department to open and close Skyline Drive, but if it's okay with you guys or the council and the mayor, I would love it if we could just kind of have kind of have an okay to do that when we know it's safe, lock it up behind us so it still keeps the traveling public out. I don't want to be liable for them. But I don't, again, don't want to ever put up one of my Jeeps up there and put them in a non-safe environment. That's our number one, number one priority of safety, always.
We'll turn this to Ryan, but I, there's a lot more complexities to Skyline Drive than just if there's snow or not.
Well, I think, I think it'd probably be best for you, me, and the chief to sit down and work out some type of procedure for when that's okay and when it's not. And maybe direct notification for when there's something other than a weather condition for why it's closed and those types of things.
Yeah. And just to kind of cover that, in the past, I mean, Rex and I have a very good line of communication. I mean, we talk a lot. And there are times when they're doing mowing up there or road construction. And Rex has always been like, hey, so you know, Skyline Drive will be closed from whatever time to whatever time. And, you know, we can't have you up there. We're like, okay, not a problem at all.
But yeah, we can work through some type of procedure for that.
Yeah, it'd just be nice, it'd be simpler because when I talk to dispatch, it takes a long time to make that happen.
Well, it makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable in some ways to give a private commercial company who's making money to have access to restricted areas at your will and at no cost to you. And so that, I think, you know, maybe getting a little too close or to a line where there might need to be a little bit more discussion on the access for commercial companies on public property, especially when it's restricted for reason, you know.
Yeah. What I'm saying is, you know, if it's a situation where patrol has not been out there yet because they're on, they have too many calls. And, you know, working out some type of procedure to allow Jeep Tours to go through when it's not because of a weather restriction or something.
Yeah, well, sometimes there's funerals or other things for the public as well or other safety reasons. Anyways, I don't know. There's just some feelings about that. Councilmember Tracy.
Just following up on what you said, Mayor. Well, I guess this is a question, this is not necessarily an exclusive agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
There could be theoretically another Jeep company, Jeep Tour company that would come along. So I guess my point of view is whatever we do here, we should be prepared to offer the same kinds of arrangements as long as other things are equal. So I just wanted to verify that.
And just keep in mind that sometimes those arrangements come at costs to the public or the taxpayers, especially if it is wear and tear on our public lands for commercial profit purposes. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a follow-up question on that. Is there, I mean, I was really appreciative of the memo that Rex did on this. And I understand that the city makes about forty-one thousand off of our cut of what Colorado Jeep Tours pays to the bridge. But are there other costs to the city, particularly for the other city-owned parks? Is it your assessment that there is additional road maintenance that needs to be done because of this commercial enterprise or additional staff hours or?
I don't know that we can quantify it in a way that it's additional road maintenance because of Jeep Tours. It's additional, I mean, we do road maintenance because it's needed. You can't necessarily say that, you know, unless somebody's out there and they see a Colorado Jeep Tour Jeep, you know, you know, mudding out there on a dirt road. You know, that, but we don't get calls like that, you know. So, you know, as Will mentioned, you know, we redid the roads in the mountain parks, you know, a couple of years ago. And, you know, that was needed. They needed to be graded. And it was, it was an expense that we were going to take on anyway because they were washboarded.
Because the average Joe needed to be able to have access to that public land.
Thank you for that. That's really helpful to know and helpful to hear. My one other question was on number nine. It says that the operator agrees to pay or reimburse the city for any and all costs associated with damage done to city-owned property within the Royal Gorge Park. And I was curious as to why that wasn't broader, given that the agreement is both for the Royal Gorge Park, but also for other city-owned parks. And if that's covered somewhere else in the agreement or if perhaps number nine needs to be a little bit broader.
Yeah, I, we bring back the same agreements from the original agreement every year. That was not something that was added to the original agreements. But certainly, that would be council's prerogative to make that adjustment if they'd like.
Sure. If it's not covered elsewhere, I would think if damage is done, it would make sense to just put in within Royal Gorge Park and other city-owned property or other city-owned parks.
Councilor, Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Thank you. It's a little bit dangerous to try and negotiate from the stand-up here. But Will, how do you, what would your feeling be about that? If we change number nine to not make it just Royal Gorge Park roads, but any of the roads that the Jeep Tour uses that are city property?
Yeah, I mean, if, believe me, if one of my Jeeps causes damage in any park, I'm more than willing to pay for it. And that's, I have no qualms with that changing whatsoever. I would also like to just add in there, and thank you for bringing up the fact that we do spend a tremendous amount of money at the bridge, which in turn goes to the coffers of the city. But there's other benefits to having Carta Jeep Tours out there in your parks. We are the eyes and ears for Rex Brady. I talk to him quite regularly. I know that the city doesn't have the opportunity to get out there every day like we do. We see things that the city will not see and we report them to Rex, whether it's tagging or anything like that, or camping that's gone well beyond camping. There's lots of activities that happen unfortunately in our parks that need to be reported and we're there, including fires. Fires obviously is a big threat to the Canyon City tourism. I know this because when I started Carta Jeep Tours in 2013, in March of 2013, in June of 2013, we had a huge event here, the Royal Gorge Fire. And I'm thankful to still be standing here, working on this, still owning Carta Jeep Tours because it about crushed us. It's very hard the first year to be completely wiped out like that. So, yeah, we report fires to that, not just to you guys, but to BLM. We report stuff there as well. We are the eyes and ears for BLM as well. So there's a lot of other benefits that we bring to the table other than just using the roads. I think we, I think we're more than equitable when you look at the big picture and what we bring to the community. Not only, not only do we bring dollars directly to your coffers, but indirectly through the amount of people we draw here to stay in the hotels, to get the bed tax. We promote Main Street very heavily. We drive our Jeeps purposely down Main Street to point out restaurants and shops that try to get people to stay here. As you well know, we have a trolley that we've used with the city to do different events. So there is other, Carta Jeep Tours brings other things to the table besides just using city roads and parks and not paying. I think we bring a lot to the community and pay our way. And I'd be more than happy if one of my Jeeps or vehicles makes, causes some kind of damage that can be easily quantified, whether it's Red Canyon Park, Temple Canyon Park, or Royal Gorge Bridgerton Park, or for Skyline Drive for that matter, even though it's not a park, absolutely. You know, we would cover that cost. If we may, if we have an incident or whatever it might be, of course, we would cover that. That's very common sense to me. But if we're going to discuss potentially changing the contract and writing that in, I'd have no qualms with that. I would then like us to look at number three, paragraph A. The very last sentence says that the city for no reason can revoke my agreement with you guys with, and give me sixty days. I have a tremendous amount of equity built up in Carta Jeep Tours. I've spent a lot of time and energy and money into building Carta Jeep Tours. It's not just as simple as going out and buying a Jeep and starting a website. It's a lot more than that. We have seven Jeeps now. I just finished completing a Jeep Barn in order to just keep them protected. If I was given sixty days to basically finish up business for whatever reason, that seems, that seems a little unfair to me. And I would, I don't think that would ever happen and I hope that would never happen. But it looks like it could happen if, for some reason, city council decided that Jeep Doggers was no longer needed here in Fremont County because they want to go to electric vehicles or whatever it might be. I think that sixty days is a bit rough.
Well, you've offered excellent service to Canyon City through Jeep Tours. And because of excellent service, I don't think you should have insecurities knowing that you provide, that you aren't giving us reasons to.
Right. And no, today, I don't have any insecurities. But, you know, like I said, I started Carta Jeep Tours in 2013. It was much different. I seriously doubt that the council members that were sitting here in 2013 really thought that I would still be here in 2023. And maybe that's why that was in there. I'm not sure. I don't think that Carta Jeep Tours is ever going to do anything that deserves getting the sixty-day thing pulled. But it's here in a contract that if I was signing a contract with anybody else other than the city, I would argue that point incessantly, that that does not be in there.
Something about representing the taxpayers and the public in general that
I understand that.
We all have to, they come number one to everybody, including us. Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd just like to thank you, Will, for coming in and talking with us. I think it's, and thank you for, you know, really what you do for the community and the care and concern you have. And I'm really encouraged to see such a cooperative relationship between you and our city administrator. And don't forget, you can, if there is, if there are issues like, you know, delays caused by calling dispatch to get a gate unlocked, you know, call Ryan and bring that up with him. Because the appropriate thing to do is to get with the police chief and talk it out and see what can be done. And I'm really encouraged by that. The, on the particular issue of sixty days, if you were, would you just strike that whole clause? Or would you put a different timeframe there?
I would strike the entire clause.
Cory.
This is not how I would recommend negotiating a contract, first of all. But a license agreement is a right to use. It's not a property interest. And kind of what the mayor said, I can't anticipate what reasons might be that the city required termination of this license agreement. So it's hard to fathom what circumstances there might be. But if there is a desire to renegotiate, I'm concerned that Exhibit A is not attached to the agreement. So I don't know what property this covers. There's a lot of things frankly, that, I mean, if there is a need to renegotiate, you should pull it from the agenda. If, and direct us how, you know, what, under what terms it should be renegotiated. But I wouldn't recommend renegotiating it this way.
Right. And remember, the most important people we are protecting are our citizens and not private companies. And so you offering excellent service, then you keep offering excellent service. We don't need to worry about it, but we also need to have securities knowing that our people are taken care of too. For unforeseeable, who knows what could happen.
And I'm more than happy with the contract the way it is. But again, it's a two.
And I would also point out, we are an additional insured on their insurance policy. So notwithstanding the language in section nine, which frankly, if I had my preference, it would be broadened to include all the property. But we are an additional insured on their insurance policies, which cover all of the properties. So in that context, we do have a level of protection.
Imagine like now, I mean, Will needs a contract. So I would say if you wanted to pull it and renegotiate, that's time, that's money for you to. You have a business that you're operating. Any other questions on this subject? All right. I think we might move on unless something else comes up, Will.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Schmisher, you said you had something further for E and K?
Oh, so just with the Golden Age Center, I wasn't, I did have a question and I noticed that they were here.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, member of the council, Dan McLemmons with the Golden Age Center and Fremont County Transit. And I'm here for any questions you have.
I just want to thank you guys so much for the service that you provide. We obviously have a lot of folks who benefit significantly from the Golden Age Center, both from your shuttle as well as from your programs downtown. I was wondering if you could share just a little bit more about the shuttle transportation and if that's open to everyone in Fremont County, if that's specifically for seniors or how that works.
Fremont County Transit is a public transportation that is anybody at any time. We actually go to grocery stores, take people back and forth to work. So that's not designated for just one particular individual or one particular demographic, I guess I'd say on that one. We actually take people as far as Denver for medical rides. Anywhere in Fremont County is, it's a suggested donation. So it's not a fair at this point. And hopefully, if we can continue operating the way we are right now, we can keep it as just a donation for, within Fremont County.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much. I also noticed that in our funding agreement, it says that the funding is contingent upon receiving funding from Fremont County. And I just wanted to see if that is in train or if you foresee any issues or concerns there.
Fremont County itself does not fund general operations or anything like that. It's for projects or say, a new vehicle or something for, say, we're looking for a new plumbing for the Golden Age Center here this year. So I will be going after funding from Fremont County itself. But as far as a pre-arranged agreement, we don't have that with the county.
Gotcha. So the funding that we provide to you isn't, my concern is just that in section two, it says that the funding shall be paid to Golden Age as soon as feasible, but that it's contingent upon and shall not be made until the Golden Age delivers proof to the city of funding from Fremont County. So I just want to make sure, or I just want to have a better understanding of if we think that that is likely to happen sometime in the year based on one of these projects that you're planning to apply for funding for.
I can't give you a guarantee, but I'm very confident it's going to happen within the year. And it's January third, so I can't say what's so far. But we have got funding from the county last year.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if that section came from some conversations back in the day when Canyon City was supporting, like we were supporting Humane Society more than the other entities. It was also supporting the Golden Age Center when other entities weren't. When we're like, Fremont County, you guys are literally serving the entire county of Fremont and their citizens. We need you to step up to the plate too. And I'm wondering if that's where this came from.
I believe so, that it, you know, we want to make sure that there's some equity there, that the city of Canyon City is not funding that operation that's going out to the entire county. And to go back to Councilwoman Schmisher's question about funding, we do verify every year before we bring this contract forward that the previous year's match has happened with Fremont County.
And I believe they have, Fremont County has been stepping up to the plate, at least fifteen thousand dollars worth.
I do my best to nudge them along.
Would you like to tell us more about your operations and the services you provide?
Well, I can tell you, I'll start with Golden Age Council. It's Golden Age Center, but we DBA Golden Age Council. We do roughly about twelve hundred congregant lunches a month for our seniors. And just even non-members come in. It's a, it's a different entity, being UOCOG Nutrition, who actually works underneath our, in our facility. But we do have at least, I wouldn't say at least, but average of twelve hundred lunches per month that come out of there. We have two hundred and fifty members at any approximate time going through there monthly. So that would be our building usage facility. And they do things such as line dancing, silver sneakers, dances, painting, wood carving, karaoke, coffee club, crafts, Bible studies, ping pong, and the list just continues on for the activities that they do at the Golden Age Center. The Canyon City Golden Age Center is a nonprofit organization. It's dedicated to enhancing the quality of life through services and activities for those fifty and above in our community. Our slogan is to serve, nourish, and edge. and educate. And that's been the motto since I, as far as nineteen sixty-one is when I believe they opened up. As far as Fremont County Transit, as I said, we are the only public transportation in Fremont County. Our ridership last year was roughly about six thousand. It was a little bit lower than the previous year. We had some staffing issues with illness and also some other things that kind of dwindled our numbers a little bit. We are fully staffed again at this point. I do believe our numbers will reach back to at least ten thousand for 2023. We are ADA compliant, and like I mentioned, we do Medicaid rides. We take people, whether it be to the doctor, to the grocery store, to a nail appointment, wherever they need to go. We do ask for at least a twenty-four-hour notice at this point, just so we have drivers. Currently, we have four paid drivers, five volunteer drivers. So staffing, as everybody's mentioned, has always been, here recently has been an issue for quite about everybody.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. And want to recognize that this is basically our only public transportation.
It is.
For our area.
It is, and.
Really important.
We have big visions of where we'd like it to go in the future, as far as continuing on maybe a fixed route at some point, connecting Fremont County, Canyon City to Florence, to Penrose, and back around, just for the general public without the twenty-four-hour notice.
That's a nice thought.
Okay.
How long have you been the director?
November fifteenth would have been a year for me.
A year?
Right. I started with them in 2020 as just a driver, believe it or not. And then I kind of worked my way up to transit manager. And then when it was time to, our previous director left, he threw my hat in the ring, and it was a unanimous vote that I was the right guy for the job. So, and I've been proud to serve ever since.
Wonderful. Thank you for all that you do to serve our seniors.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Any other questions for Daniel? Okay, I think we're good for now. Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Looks like we might still have a question on item K.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question on item K was for Administrator Stevens. I noticed that it's a split award to both Lidl Enterprises of Ohio and Roadside Supplies of Pueblo. But it doesn't kind of explain what the split will be in terms of what portion of the award will go to each. And then the amount not to exceed is actually the total amount of both bids combined. So I was hoping you could just give us a little bit more information on how the award is being split and why the amount is essentially double. Thanks.
I spoke to our street superintendent, and, you know, he's expecting about half. It's roughly going to be about fifty-fifty for each. Some of the, some of the signs that are provided by Roadside Supplies of Pueblo are more expensive signs. So they're more of our, you know, larger weighfinding signs, and just one of those signs can cost a thousand dollars. So he's expecting that some of those, there may be more of those signs that are needed. And it's just going to be a higher, higher dollar amounts, but probably lower volume compared to the other one.
Thank you for that. And is there a reason why it's, I mean, in looking at the bids, one of them is twenty-seven thousand, one of them is eighteen thousand nine hundred. So I'm just, if we're doing a fifty-fifty split, I guess I'm just a little bit confused as to why it's forty thousand?
He, that's what he was expecting that his need would be. So, you know, the one that's eighteen-nine, it's not quite fifty percent, but, you know, I would imagine that that's about what he's going to spend with the one that's eighteen-nine, which I believe is the Lidl Enterprise one.
Sorry, my understanding was that those were for the full, like, they were bidding on the full RFP, and that you were awarding each one of them fifty percent. Am I misunderstanding?
I think what he was expecting was splitting this between, between the two with that not to exceed of the forty thousand. So.
So just because they bid that doesn't mean that we're going to spend that much money with them. But we're gonna, but they gave prices per types of signs, and we'll order the signs that we need from each company based on what.
Correct.
Like, weighfinding is better served by the one in Pueblo, and we'll just spend what we can afford for the year. Is that right?
That is, that is correct.
And the council approval is in an amount not to exceed forty thousand. So that is the number that is the line in the sand.
Yeah. So between the two, we cannot go over the forty thousand.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council on our consent agenda? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. And Will Cullen, we're wishing you the best on your new year in Jeep Tours.
Just say thank you.
Just wishing you the best in twenty twenty-three in your Jeep Tours. Thank you. Ryan, do you have an administrator's report for this?
You have a written report in the packet. I don't have anything additional at this point. Of course, we've had a lot of holidays and time away between the last meeting and this meeting, so nothing really new to report. Regarding the troll, I did meet with Kyle Horn today from the Rec District, and he was going to approach his board about a possible site in John Griffin Park, if that's available. But right now, we would still have to acquire funding in order to do that. So we will reach out and see what we can come up with. The bridge was going to be discussing it later this month.
Thank you. The train might be another. Did we mention that before?
The train?
The train?
I don't think we did, but.
But that would actually be closer to the train than the bridge. So. Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a suggestion on our planning and zoning, where there are going to be temporary certificates of occupancy or certificates of occupancy. It'd be awfully nice to have a estimated ballpark number. And I realize that there's a lot of moving parts that can affect when things happen. But if it can't even be, if it can't be, you know, narrowed down to a quarter, even half of the year that it might be expected or something like that, for a CO or TCO, for some of the things that we, that have those as part of their.
So are you asking for how long a TCO might be in place?
No, I'm asking when it may be issued.
Oh, okay.
So I realize, I realize there's a lot of uncertainty there. And, you know, recognizing that uncertainty is certainly fine. But it would be nice to have just an estimate to, for us to understand how long a project might take.
Okay.
Or when, when things might happen.
Any other questions for Ryan? All right, then I'm going to move on to our only item, nine A. This is introduction and adoption by title only, something we do every single year. This is resolution number one of 2023. This is designating the public place for posting notices pursuant to CRS twenty-four-six dash four oh-two-two C.
And.
Which of you, which of you are going to do it?
It's our resolution designating our posting place. And as, as you mentioned, Madam Mayor, this is something we do first meeting of every year.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number one, series of 2023.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Looking forward to a new 2023 year.
And I, Madam Mayor, I have a motion.
Yes, let's do it.
I move that the city council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. Executive session to be, to hold a conference with the city attorney, to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four-six dash four oh-two-four B regarding, number one, pending administrative proceedings at the Public Utilities Commission, and number two, urban renewal matters, and to instruct negotiators regarding the four-mile development pursuant to CRS twenty-four-six dash four oh-two-four E.
A second.
Spend a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, we will go into executive session.